We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all. So we do technically have a quorum. So first thing, non-public, non-public session 91a 3a. The dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employer of the disputing of such employee in the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting and two, request that the meeting be open in which case this request shall be granted. Bridgewater?
Yes.
Bristol?
Yes.
Danbury, yes? And Groton?
Yes.
Okay, we will go to non-public. Susan, she can just go and play to non-public. We're waiting for Heidi and Fran. For ten minutes of non-public. All right, next, the agenda is a public hearing, so I'm going to open for the public hearing, the Newfoundland area school district will conduct a public hearing to accept and expend the funds from Stop School Violence Threat Assessment grant in the amount of $11,676.70. Okay, we're in a public hearing now, to accept a grant.
That's why you have to spoken all day.
That's all good. Anne, do you know what the grant, or is it, could you?
Sure. This grant is primarily to corporate school districts and police departments to follow prison settlement procedures. We would like to spend the money on sending the intervention team at that high school to a training in October to develop risk assessment, who risks to keep our students safe.
Any questions for the public hearing regarding the grant? Yes. Yep, it's a public hearing, yep, in regards to just the grant.
Detective.
Yep.
Detective Sells from Bristol. I didn't quite hear exactly what you said, but do we have a violence problem here? I've been out of district, asked the world, I'm just asking.
It's not, it's not all about violence, it's also both...
Violent prevention?
Right, and also like things that are going on at home and with the child and with the students.
So it can go beyond just like the school, okay?
Right, yes, things that are happening in the community with those students.
I need a motion to accept the grant money.
So move.
And a second, sir. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Standings? All right, I will close the public hearing. Next on the agenda, approval or modification of agenda, I don't have anything else. 6:30, 6:30 now, on the dot, bam. That's already on the agenda.
That's clear, Your Honor.
That's already on the agenda, G. Next, approval of minutes from June 14th, so we were given the minutes from June 14th in our email. I read through them, anybody have any large grammatical, major errors, issues with the minutes from June 14th? Sue's still looking, so.
Still looking.
I know. Okay. Sorry, go back to my agenda. All right, I'm in a motion to accept the June 14th minutes. All right, I'm in a motion to accept the June 14th minutes.
So move.
All those in favor say aye. Well, be a second, one of you second, switch to a second, sorry.
Did you want it was for Sue's second?
Okay, just, sorry. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Extentions? All right, moving on, public comment. Microphone's open, it is open for, public comment is open to agenda items only, and you, anybody that comes up to the microphone has a five minute limit. It is open for the public.
Hello, my name's Danielle from Bristol. Can you, everyone hear me?
What is your name?
Danielle.
Danielle?
Yes, from Bristol. I'm here in opposed to that you guys do not force masking on our children for another year. There's no reason to be doing it if you guys are here, one with a mask, which is his choice. It must be you've chosen not to wear a mask, which is your choice. Parents should have the choice if they want their children to go to school with masks. It should not be forced that parents have no choice in this. Children are, need that socializing, they need to see faces. Some people need that to, because they're hard of hearing, or they have special needs, and they need to be able to see people's faces, they want to see people's reactions. My child, who does have some issues, was so excited to hear at the beginning of the summer that you guys were not going to, it was proposed that you guys were not going to do a mask-a-day for the school. I have since told him that you had your reopening plan, that you guys want them to be masked again. He wants to go remote, which is no longer an option in your reopening plan. How is that fair to our children? Our children don't want to go to school, some, not all, because they have to wear a mask. They don't like having to wear a mask. How many of you guys have to go to work every day and wear a mask? Not everyone, some people still work from home. It's not fair to our children, who have no say currently on what they have to wear at school. Masks should not be one of them. Thank you.
John Sellers from Bristol, again. Kind of show a lot of my eyes here. Any case, I'm not one with much of flowery words, I did send you all an email this a couple of weeks ago, and I'll touch on that in a few minutes, but since we're just talking about masks first, I sent you all an email, except maybe one, I don't think I had the email address, but in any case, I sent an email today about a doctor talking about masks to a school board, and in any case, he was outlining exactly why they don't work, and he had the material to back it up, and all that, that he was giving to them. I hope you had time to look at it, basically, I am not for masks, I don't think they work, matter of fact, everything I've seen, it shows they don't work. It's so simple, I mean, we're all adults, we're definitely all know, you know, if they work or not. So to pressure these kids to wear masks, I kind of brought that on child abuse, and then on top of it, I think it's a psychological thing for them. And then I saw this last spring, or this last summer, maybe it was, it must have been early spring or something, whenever they doing track, I see kids running in the track and stuff with a mask, and I said, this is crazy. But anyways, I'm hoping that the plan doesn't have, doesn't include masks this year, and that you could see through it, and see above it, that they're just, they don't work, they just don't work, and they're really harming the kids more than you think. I have a text message from another person that just has a real problem speaking, and this is from Heather Hack, she lives in Alexandria, Heather Hack. She has four kids, but in any case, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but I'm going to give you the gist of what she's saying. She's saying, "I'm writing in support of parental choice in regards to children's medical decisions. At the time of this writing, Nashua, Exeter, Wintesquon, and many other public school districts have acknowledged the decision-making authority of parent, parents for their children's medical decision. Masks are optional at these schools, each family is welcome to meet their individual health needs, the way they decide what works best for them. The school district needs to recognize and respect the authority of the parents in order to maintain relevance, relevance in the lives of the community members. I personally know multiple families who plan to choose alternate to public school, such as Catholic school, or private school, or homeschooling." And it basically should go on, it's going on in there, you can tell she's, the masks for her are not the right thing to do. And also, as a school, as a district, you will lose more people, you'll lose more students because they will start homeschooling more, and create these homeschool pods, and next thing you know, you'd lost another 50 or 100 kids. And that's the last thing that we need to happen here, because now you don't get the state money, you know? Any case, that's what she wanted to say, and she should just go on and say a lot more, but I'm not very good at reading as well, so. Basically, allowing medical choice demonstrates a level of trust in the community. Please join me in affirming the rights of families to make decisions independently, and I should thank you for your consideration, Heather Hack. Again, it's not verbatim, I didn't read it that way, but you get the gist of what she was saying. So we're hoping that you don't do masks. I hope you can see through, the masks don't work, and you just don't do them, I think it's very harmful to kids. The last thing I want to touch on real quickly is CRT. Pierre actually did write me back on a note, I sent a letter to him, it was about two or three weeks ago, and he's saying that they do not teach CRT in our schools, and they don't teach it, they don't plan to teach it, and they're not going to teach it by any other name. So that's, to me, that's a great thing, I think it's the right thing. And if you want to teach CRT, which is a theory, I think that should be done at home, since it's a theory, it's not a fact. So I would hope that that gets carried through with each member here on the school board. I had two school board members that did reply to me, and the other, I don't know, what other, five, six, five, just for some reason can't seem to reply to my emails. I want to remind you all, you're elected officials, right now I'm not voting for you, next time, I'm not having it. I want a reply, I expect a reply, and I deserve a reply, I have the right as a voter to at least get a reply, and I think that should be, as a little bit of respect on my end, and if you want respect on your end, then reply, it's simple as that. There's nothing to hide about, nothing to hide behind, all right? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Friedman, I live in Bridgewater, I have two granddaughters, ages four and six, this thing on masking drives me crazy. First of all, it's totally out of perspective, they've known since the whole thing started, it was older people and people who had medical problems, so clearly, I mean, it's like 0.04% kids have died with COVID, that's about 400 out of 330 million people in the United States, so it's very low risk, and actually, it's much greater risk of dying from drownings, cancer, homicide, car accidents, even seasonal flu. So to put the kids through another year of this nonsense is crazy, and, you know, school is supposed to be a more pleasant experience, a lot of kids don't like going to school to begin with, why make it more miserable for another year, it's been a year and a half? So of course, some parents, they're kind of hyper about it, if they, you know, want to subject their kids to torture, that's fine, but they shouldn't be able to impose that on all other kids who are attending schools. And by the way, I did actually talk to some medical people about, what do you think about this mask controversy? Because they're the ones who work with, in hospitals, and healthcare, and so forth, and they say, actually, the N95 mask fitted, plus a face shield, that's beneficial, but the cloth masks, forget it. So they're not fitted properly, people are putting them on every which way, they're putting them in backpacks, and pockets, they're dirty. So they said, it's a waste that way, they'd have to be fitted, and who's, is somebody going to check when the kids come in every day that they're fitted properly, and if you really want to take it seriously, they got to be fitted right. Well, you're going to check every child, that'd be ridiculous, and then when they go to lunch and recess, and they take them off to eat or whatever, they got, somebody's going to check them again, that they're fitted? So it's totally ridiculous, let's make school not a miserable experience, and just let certain ones, if they want to, if the parents insist on, but not everybody else. So please, not another year of torture for the kids. Thank you.
Good evening, Randall Kelly, Bristol. First of all, I want to thank you all for your volunteerism, I get it, I'm actually the vice chair of the planning board, and vice chair of the CIP committee, so I get what it's like to be the bad guy most of the time. With that said, I had a speech written, and I forgot it, and I can only jot down some things while I was in the parking lot, but either way, I think it'll suffice. If you look up aerosol particles in the CDC site, I think you're going to find that there's three absolute, three studies that the CDC paid for, that show you that aerosol particles are not stopped by anything. This gentleman just spoke about N95 mask, I do a lot of sheet rock, I have to wear a neprin mask over my N95 mask, if not, I look like Tony Montana when I'm done, and that's just the way it is. If sheet rock dust can get around an N95, aerosols are definitely doing so. We got to remember something about this, is this whole virus is, we've been subjecting us to every bit of this, because, I guess the only thing I can think of always, is that we've been put through this because, I lost my train of thought, and I apologize for that. It's the only, only time in America's history that we've been governed by positive test results, not rates of infection, not cases of death. And that unfortunately has been governed by a PCR test that now the CDC has told us is inadequate, it's given them a substantial amount of negative positives, of which now they told everybody by December 31st, they need to find a new way of testing. What happened to all those tests? Why are we not going back and seeing, where is the people who have been tested positive for COVID, did they really have COVID? We don't, we're never going to know unfortunately. So I guess, to make a long story short, there's so much information out there to counter the suggestion that we need masks, especially for children. This virus does have a bias for the elderly, children are the smallest demographic impacted by this, so, and I think that is, we all know, the older we get, the weaker our immune system gets, and I understand that, we have a lot of factors that contribute to that, our diets, our, diet is the biggest thing, I guess I'll just leave it at that, and that's something when we get older, finances make people eat things they really shouldn't, and that weakens a lot of things also. I'll leave it at that, I just wish that we take, and you take the time, and I understand some of these folks have sent you some information, I was in politics for a long time, I don't send emails anymore because I realize it's the same exact thing, you don't get any responses, because your response better be to the T, because if not, you're going to get a lot of scrutiny because of your response. So I kind of understand why you don't return the answer sometimes, put in the same assets like these gentlemen have spoken, you are elected officials. Some type of response is better than none at all, so you don't get this negative reflection that you're ignoring your constituents. So with all that said, I thank you for your time, and I hope you make the right decision for the kids. Thank you.
Hello there, my name is Brad Pernogler, I am a teacher at the Newfoundland Memorial Middle School. I've been hearing these concerns about masks, and I certainly understand it, that having gone the last year with having to teach in the classroom with a mask, and having my students have to wear masks is an unpleasant experience, I totally understand that, and it's an uncomfortable reality, but.
I can't hear, it's muffled, that's.
That's his choice to wear a mask.
I understand that, but I have an opinion, all right? And this is part of the problem with masks, I can't understand the work he's saying, I don't even know where he's from.
Oh, I'm a teacher, and I am from Plymouth.
Why are you talking, this is not your district.
But I work here, sir. I am teaching in the middle school, so I'd like to think, do I not have a voice in this matter, or?
You don't, you don't have a vote.
We've allowed teachers to speak in the past, we will continue with that policy.
Then someone's going to have to speak for him, because I can't hear what he's saying, this is not a record, I want to be able to hear.
I get, go like this, I have to direct my voice this way for them to hear me, but I can't speak this way. I think that, as unfortunate as it is, I do believe personally, from my experience and my view within the classroom, students should still continue to wear masks. We have a number of students that are coming from all over the towns, they're coming from a number of different family backgrounds, and given that they're spending time in relatively enclosed rooms, we need to be considerate of the fact that transmission still can occur, and with the new variants developing, that are proving to be more infectious, especially the Delta that we've been hearing about more recently, I understand that we don't want to worry about this, but until we are at a point where all of our students can be vaccinated, and all of our teachers can be vaccinated, we're not going to be able to do our job safely, and ensure the safety of our students. If we don't at least have some kind of measure of action to, you know, provide some safety in the classroom, whether that be masks, or vaccination, or something, going in, just letting the kids do their own thing without masks, that's posing a risk, and I don't like wearing this thing, I really don't, and most people would imagine would agree with me on that respect, but I'd rather be uncomfortable, and maybe have a little bit of trouble breathing if I'm talking a lot, than have to risk the concept of, has a student who's possibly been coughing today, just got a cold, or something more? I'd rather have some measure of safety than none at all. So that is just simply my anecdote, anecdotal experience being a teacher, that we should have something. Masks may not be the best option, but I don't know what other options we have outside of vaccination, which currently are not available for our students, so, thank you.
My name's Debbie Glidden, I live in Alexandria, and kind of in answer to our teacher here, I have a, the University of Florida lab did some testing on masks, there's 11 dangerous pathogens that they detected on the masks, pneumonia, tuberculosis, E. coli, diphtheria, Legionnaires' disease, staphylococcus, those are among the diseases that they're finding in the masks, and as far as the kids having trouble breathing because they're talking too much, these are kids we're talking about, they talk, they laugh, they play, they should be able to do it, and still be able to breathe. And as far as the vaccinations go, that should be the kids, the kids, between the kids and their parents, it shouldn't be all over the school, whether the kids have their vaccinations or not, and thank you, Bretta, for answering me, she's the only one that answered me for the emails that I sent out, and thank you for your time.
My name is Wanda, and I'm from Alexandria, and the school board has a responsibility to decide to mandate children wear masks, I think that you also need to take the responsibility to do your homework, and to use research on ramifications that masks have on these children's psychological wellbeing. The suicide rate in 2020 for children has exponentially been higher than any other year, for the simple reason is, children are visual and they're tactile, and when they have these masks on, they're not communicating with their peers, they're not communicating with their students, their depressions, the depression rates are higher, I think if you're going to mandate masks, I think you need to look at all the ramifications before you make that decision.
My name's Joshua Reynolds, from New Hampton, I have two boys in school, one in elementary school, the other one in the middle school, and my daughter's starting elementary school in New Hampton this year, so. So, previous years before COVID, my, my boys have done great in school. They love school and not a problem. Last year, they were coming home, headaches, you know, dizziness, just not good moods at all. Completely different mental state. They've gotten back better this summer. So, not to beat a dead horse, but the mask thing is terrible. I don't know what to say. I think a lot of it has already been said. And if it is your decision, which I don't know if it is, I mean, it may be a, you know, Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Education. I don't know. This is my first school board meeting I've been to, so if anybody wants to give me any tips or information about how these usually work, that'd be great. But yeah, last year, the schools were kind of in like a, like a commie POW camp or something. As far as, you know, my sons came home and said, you know, my mask slipped down below my nose and I got scalded for it, or whatever they told me. And I'm like, if you need to breathe, go ahead and breathe. And they said, I don't care what happens, you breathe. So if we all love these vaccines so much, and they're so great, you know, people are still testing positive for COVID-19 after being vaccinated. You've got the new variants coming out that supposedly the vaccine's useless on. So where does the mask wearing end? If it does ever, if there's just going to be a new variant, a new variant, I'm going to be wearing masks. We have no idea what the long-term effects of these masks, this mask wearing is. You know, whether it be CO2 poisoning. For my job, I am a frontline employee. I work eight to 16-hour days, and I wore a mask for a year, year and a half. And it was absolutely terrible. I end up, in April, I was in the hospital for four days, four nights. Ended up having a heart problem and a heart procedure done. I'm on heart meds now. But I tried asking the doctors if it could be from mask wearing. And they told me that some of the, it is possible because of the CO2. You're not breathing enough actual oxygen. So they go and put you on the oxygen, and your numbers start getting better. You start feeling great. So I just don't want any long-term effects from my children. And I understand if you want your kids to wear masks, that's great, whatever. I'm not going to judge anybody for it, but I just hope to put some real thought into this. Hopefully it's true this day. That's about it. Thank you.
We have another section later.
Yes.
Brian Richardson, Alexandria. So as part of the school reopening plan, has that been publicized? Is, has it?
It's sitting there. We're going to go over to the meeting.
Okay, so I mean, the discussion we've had is, is all discussion that is being thought, might be discussed, but we don't know what the actual, what the actual school reopening plan is yet, right?
Right. The board was given the plan on Friday to review over the weekend, and I'm going to ask the board for approval. So we're going to review that in a few minutes.
Right, so just so for the, for the folks that are here, we're going to have this, the meeting, and their, part of the meeting is going to be the school reopening plan. And then there'll be another public discussion that can be used to discuss what we've discussed, what we're discussing now.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else for this public comment section? Okay. Sorry, this is new, my new agenda on my phone, not having, trying to, not print so much stuff. No, I just had to switch programs. All right, next, correspondence?
Nope.
Superintendent report?
Okay, so we've had a busy summer. Aside from developing the plan, which will go, the opening plan, which we'll be discussing later. We've had a lot of maintenance projects in the district, new flooring in the cafeteria in the middle school, new roof is being done at the middle school, new floor at Danbury, multipurpose room and painting, new floor in the corridor at Bristol Elementary. We have some more planning for more projects around ventilation and roofs and windows. We developed our goals, which are provided for the board. That was as a result of, we had done a survey of all of our staff, the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats. So we took that information and we developed goals for the district for this year, which end up being aligned with the strategic plan. One of the things that we heard consistently through the, our analysis was that our people wanted consistency across the six buildings, and they wanted alignment and communication. So we've developed plans for that. I provided that with the board. Our second plan, our second goal was to develop or is to develop and implement preschool, the grade 12 practices to improve safety, student safety, health and wellness. And we developed action plans for that. And then the third goal is to develop and implement a comprehensive technology plan to include equipment replacement, program replacement, upgrades and technology coordination throughout the district. So we had a really good couple of days with the administrative team working on that. Really placed a high value on the input that all of our employees had in the process. Let's see, I'm going to leave it at that. Do you want me to review the plan at this point?
No, because that's, no, that's on the agenda later.
Okay, so we'll stop there. Yep.
Else is not here. Any other announcements or recognition?
Nope.
Old business, special education procedure manual, review amendments.
So I can speak to that. Basically, this one, the state, and I have three sentences to it. So, intermedia and vocal clients, I have the three sentences and it's.
All right, and that was in our supporting documents as well. The email that we got, need a motion to approve that?
Yep.
Okay, a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Extentions? All right. New business policies for second read. We have JLCJ for concussion, head injuries and management guidelines, IICA-FNASD field trip approval form, IGDJ intrascholastic athletics, IKF high school graduation requirements, IGD co-curricular programs, and IKFC awarding of diplomas.
I want to approve the named policies for second read.
I need a second? I need someone to second motion. Oh, Britta did, okay, sorry. Any further discussions on policies for second reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, next, on the agenda, audit services.
Tell you me, we had auditors Melanson, and they gave me a call a few weeks ago. They lost their governmental auditor, and they are not able to do any more auditing services for us. I have called Plotik and Sanderson from Concord, and they gave me a fee schedule. And I have, their fees are about $500 more than Melanson, but their single audit, which we also do need, is $1,200 less. So in reality, we are actually saving about $500 by going with Plotik and Sanderson. And we can sign a contract with them for the next three years. And I'd like to Google through that.
Okay. What was the name of the company again?
Plotik and Sanderson.
Plotik and Sanderson.
Plotik and Sanderson.
Plotik. Okay. So you need, we need to have a motion to approve that new contract with the mentioned name.
Can we accept the audit services from company name?
Plotik and Sanderson.
Plotik.
I can't pronounce it, I'll be honest.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Pierre, the school reopening plan.
So we are, our health management committee is recommending that we open up the year with masks optional for our students and staff. But we do recommend, and actually we have no choice, that masks will be worn on the school buses. And that is out of our control because first student who's our transportation contractor is requiring masks. But we feel right now, you know, things have changed a lot. So since our plan, to your point, when we were required to post our plan in June, Department of Health and Human Services was still recommending masks at that point. We were required to post that plan in order to receive federal grants, COVID grants. So since then, Department of Health and Human Services has backed off that recommendation, and they're not recommending masks in school. So we're going to take them up. This, the way we work all of last year was we followed Department of Health and Human Services guidance. So we will continue to do that. So basically, the only thing we're going to keep doing is we're going to strive for three-foot distancing spacing of our students, really stressing the hand washing, especially in the elementary students. When they would go out, come back from recess, or they're washing their hands all the time. And the nurses really feel that is also an effective mitigation measure. So we will keep doing that. So other than that, the plan, it's almost all back to normal. And we'll follow NHIA guidelines for athletics, which right now are no masks. I look at the town by town COVID cases. I looked at it today before I came to this meeting. And the newfound area is in really great shape. There's hardly any COVID in any of the seven towns. But what I ask the board to do is, you know, to give the administration the authority to make changes if we have to. We hope we don't have to. But if things change, what we would like to do is take it as a very regionalized approach within our region. So if we had some issues in Danbury, we would deal with Danbury. And maybe Danbury would have to go to mask for a short period of time. But we would deal with it like that. So that's our plan. So it's, it's pretty much back to normal. And we, you know, and this has all been agreed upon. Our school nurses last year were just absolutely tremendous for us, the work that they did. They attend weekly meetings with Dr. Chen, you know, via Zoom, and they continue to do that. So they are behind our plan 100%. And they all agree to it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
There was a part about students being assessed by the school nurse incentive if necessary. Are they still out either for the quarantine period or negative masks?
Good question. I had not included that yet because we're waiting for guidance on Department of Health and Human Services. In fact, our nurses are attending a meeting this week about that. We've heard that the quarantine rules are going to change. So I did not, I didn't include it in there. Because, but once we find out, I'll, we'll add it to this and we'll let the board know. But again, we've, we plan to follow whatever they, whatever DHHS recommends. That's what we're going to do.
And then recess, are we back to mingling kids or are we still in?
Yeah, nope. They will mingle. You know, the data shows that virtually no COVID is transmitted when anybody is outdoors. And so we all feel very safe in having our students outdoors. So we're going to have normal opening procedures. If you recall last year, you know, they, they weren't allowed the morning recess. We're going to have morning, everything will be back to normal.
And then the middle school keep their recess that they?
Yeah. Whatever they had prior to last year.
They did last year. Some of the middle schoolers were able to go out for 15-minute walks.
We'll have to talk to Jay Lewis about that. KD?
Whether that was a mask break?
There might have been a mask break. But I don't think they typically, well, Brad would be able to tell us.
No, 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 no. Unfortunately, you can't because we're, sorry.
But that's, so basically, that's the plan.
Okay.
But you can at the other public comment. Let's ask a question about, in the academic needs section, the second bullet here, the district will hire two full-time literacy specialists, et cetera, et cetera. Are they going to be available to help the kids with catch-up growth as a result of some who have fallen behind?
Yeah, the feeling with the principals was that a lot of our students fell behind in reading. You know, and this is really, so the two specialists will be one shared between the middle and the high school, and then one for the four elementary schools. It's really to support, because you've got to remember also, it goes back to March 2020. You know, we can't forget that we had a large block of time when nobody was in school, and remote learning was really new and maybe not as effective. So yes, it is catch-up identifying students who've fallen behind and to support them and bring them back up to grade level with reading. And those are, for the public, those are grant-funded positions. So we've added two literacy specialists, an additional guidance counselor, because we really don't know. We have a number of students who will be returning back from remote. You know, they, they, they chose to be remote, or their families did, and they're returning back to school. So to, I don't know whose point it was, somebody talked about mental health and depression and things like that. So we want to support our students who are returning and maybe having some of those issues. So that's why we've added a guidance counselor, and that's paid for through the federal COVID grant.
Yes, another question here.
Sure.
You mentioned that the policy would be parents' decision on masks for their children, but that if something changed, that the administration can make a decision. I ask that the board be notified before that decision is made, and that if there is a temporary decision made, that the board be called together to have a discussion of it and have input into how long that policy would be changed for and what parameters.
Well, it's up to the board to decide.
I think, and didn't you say they're, they're, they're making more information about quarantine and what they're recommending if there is outbreaks?
Right, we don't have that information yet. But we will have that before school opens.
Right, then we'll have that the next meeting.
For the next, for the 23rd, or whatever the next meeting is.
Is it the 23rd?
Or whatever the second Monday is. Is that 23rd?
I think so, sure. Yep.
It is.
Okay.
See, I knew that. So yeah, that's up to the board to decide. I mean, one of the problems is it's such a fluid, you know, last year, we made the decisions in our office because things, you know, things would come up on a Saturday afternoon. We're working Saturdays all the time doing this stuff. So it's, it's really to have to wait to convene a meeting, to make a decision, I think it just makes it difficult for us. I mean, sometimes the timing is right. We're coming in, you know, we're going to have a meeting in a couple of days. But I, I thought it worked well last year. But that, that's purely up to the board to decide.
I think it did work well last year. I think that the two monthly meetings and the time in between is short enough to have you make a decision and then bring it to us. Let us know, and then have us who need to do your own.
Yes, I may. Unless, unless I'm out of the country, I work 24/7. So I would never object to getting an email and having an emergency meeting called on a moment's notice as allowed by state law.
But like I said, it's up to the board. That's not my decision. I just said that. The way we did it last year. I just said that the way we did it last year, I think, worked pretty well. I thought we were very responsible. Our decisions were very thought out, and they were made, you know, were data-driven. And we had a lot of compliments on the way things went last year. A lot of people were happy that their children were safe. So, but like I said, it's up to the board to decide that. It's not my decision.
Any other discussion? Somebody wanna make a motion for the opening plan?
I move we accept the New Found Area School District 2021, 2022 school year opening plan as written.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
So for the public, I'll be posting this plan tomorrow morning on our website, so you can view it there.
New Found Area School District goals, but you kind of already went over those in your superintendent report, right?
Yep. I would ask that the board approve our goals.
Okay. Sorry, I switched me back to that. Okay. Is it a motion for the New Found Area School District goals as written?
Second.
Any further discussion regarding the goals? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Next on the agenda, approval for superintendent, oh, wait a minute. What, we need to do, we've got to have on the agenda the hiring and resignations, because they were new. They weren't on the.
Well, they already, but you already had given me authority to do that.
Right, but we still have to approve them.
So if you wanna do it.
We still have to make a motion to approve them.
Okay.
We'll make that letter A. Yes, we'll make that letter. But we should do it, actually, that should be letter G, and approval for superintendent should be H because of sequential of how it's done. So the resignations, Megan Campbell, an English teacher, and then requesting for hiring for Sean Bean, Ariel Mahoney switching to a full-time English teacher, and Kelly Thomas for director of school counseling. Need a motion to accept those resignations and hiring.
So, second.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oh, my goodness gracious. Yes, abstentions, sorry. Anybody against it? Abstentions? There we go. This is what happens when you stay home. All right, next, approval for superintendent to hire and accept resignations until the next scheduled board meeting?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Sue.
Sue.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Board member comments?
I am very happy with the reopening plan. I'm so happy to see this moving forward in a timely manner. I was really gonna be upset if it was not like it is written, and so, but I'm very happy to see this.
And I would like to say the same thing. When I saw how that was written, I said, what a relief. I have my feelings, and I have a lot of reading on the subject, holding off for the last. And I do, I did get an email from the English teachers, but I did think that I wanted to reply at the meeting, so, because I thought a lot of people probably were asking the same questions. I did get your email, but I thought I should respond at the meeting, because a lot of people would be asking about it. And the state has also come up with some guidelines, well, it's a law, I guess, against teaching critical race theory in the schools in New Hampshire. So that's a good, that's a good thing to hear. That's it.
Yes, and I'll be sharing the guidance. We have guidance from Department of Justice and Department of Education that I'm sharing that, I think I sent that out to the board, and also that'll go to the teachers. So there is guidance for teachers, but we're confident there should be no problem for us to follow that.
Fran?
Thank you. I have two items I'd like to mention. The first is there's been several mentions tonight about responses from board members and questions being answered. That comes up a lot, and a lot of people don't understand the rules, and I'm glad Melissa was very clear that public comment is for agenda items only. I would tell you that when you get elected to the school board, they drill into you that no individual school board member can make a decision on their own and say this is the policy. So they're hesitant for people to get into a debate with you about what you're justifying about, or what you're expressing, because if there is a public statement made, they want to be careful. But what gets out there is that it is the position of the board. Now, those of you who know me, I never leave my opinion at the door, and I reserve my right to say my thoughts to you, whether they're the board's thoughts or not. And I'm very careful to say this is my personal opinion, and I do always respond when I get a question asked. Some members, they're hesitant to do that, because somebody may read into it, something that they really didn't need, particularly if they get caught on the phone, and you don't have that paper trail, to say, oh, no, see, I said this is my personal opinion. We had some correspondence from a gentleman today that emailed all the board members. I did respond to him. And I made it very clear that it was my personal opinion. So maybe that helps you understand why we don't debate the issues, or why we don't a lot of times feel comfortable, particularly on phone call, returning a phone call. My second thing I wanted to comment about was Sue brought up the critical race theory. Twice I have asked if we have any of that in our school, and Pierre asked the superintendent or the school principal, and has assured me that we do not. I can tell you a number of school districts in the state are currently under write-to-know requests and legal actions over this. And I can tell you they often say, oh, we don't do that, and it's later found out that they did, but they didn't realize it. So I'm cautioning us to make sure that we are now in compliance with the new state law, because our school district doesn't need to spend unnecessary legal dollars, and parents in our school district should feel assured that when they're told something, that they can trust what they're told. So I would suggest if you contact the school with an email, and you want a response collectively, then request that a vote be taken at the next school board meeting on whatever email you are asking, so that you don't feel that you were ignored. Thank you.
And just a reminder that if school board members respond to all, it is considered a forum, and it is considered a meeting, so we have to be very careful about how, when, what we do respond to via emails as well, based on write-to-knows, and, you know, if there's more than four school board members, it can be considered a meeting, just like school board members, if there's more than four of us, and we all, for some reason, showed up at the homestead at the same time, it is considered a school board meeting, and everything that is discussed has the potential to be under write-to-know. So just so people know some of the rules and regulations based on emails and things, and I can assure you, I read every email I get. So personally, that's just me. I absolutely read everything, and I keep it in mind as we're, personally, as we're discussing things here at our board meetings. Any other board member comments? Okay. Next, public comment, only on agenda items per policy, five-minute limit.
John Sullivan, Bristol. So we, the opening plan, I just wanna say, you're not hearing the parents. They don't want you to put masks on their kids, period. They don't work. Don't put them on ever, again. It's just bad news. It's psychological damage to the kids, and you're hurting them. And this guy that actually had his heart condition, if that's what he had, my point is, it could have been from a lack of oxygen. Your organs need that oxygen. So therefore, I'm just saying, listen to the parents. Give the parents the rights. You don't have the right. You teach the kids. Let us parent. All right? Don't put masks on the kids again, because it's a trickle-down thing. If you do it, the TTCC does it. Someone else does it. The library does it. Someone else. It just goes snowballs. And it's just a big interruption, and I really believe it really is bordering on child abuse, where I was unconcerned. That's my opinion. All right? And I know I can't talk about the, or can I? I'm gonna ask you. The email I sent, since they discussed it on open comments.
You mean what? I.
The email I sent to the whole board.
Yeah, you can bring it up.
So my point on that is, I do appreciate the response. I don't expect a reply to all. But again, you're elected officials. I wanna know how you think, so I know how to vote. That's all. Just tell me how you think, so I know how to vote. That's my reason for asking. Thank you.
Danielle from Bristol. So, thank you. I appreciate the updated school opening, reopening thing. I wish that you would post it so the public can see it before we come to these school board meetings. I read it a few hours before I came here, what was posted online, so the public can actually know what you guys plan. The plan was, that was written online, was about the masking. That could have probably saved some time for everyone if we knew that it was gonna be optional, a chance of it. Having parents and the public updated makes a huge difference, and it might help make it easier for you guys, because then you're not repeating yourself, and repeating, and repeating. Back to the emails, just a quick, like, hey, I received your email would be great, too. I know I've emailed some superintendent, some of the school board members, superintendent, because there's been issues in the schools, and I want it dealt with, or I want some opinion on it, or guidance on where to go. That'd be great to have as well. Like we said, you guys are elected officials, except for the superintendent, who is hired. But still, you are teaching our children, you are representing the teachers, and helping the teachers teach our children. Answer us. It's our children. That's all we ask. I ask that you guys, my belief is that you guys should have read the whole reopening plan, so that we all could hear what it is, because that is more than just a masking. There's more pages than just about the masking. I have no idea what's in there. You guys voted on it. We have no idea. What else is in there? We should have a right to know. You guys voted on for public comment. Well, what's public comment good for, other than you guys to hear us talk whatever we're talking about? Why isn't that open up to the public? Why do we not have that before you guys are voting on it? All I'm asking is for transparency. Prior to votes. Do I think it's right that administration should be able to choose if they need to change something without having a board meeting? No, that's why they have emergency meetings. That's why you can hold emergency meetings. You are hired. School board members are voted in. They are elected officials. They're not hired. They are supposed to be looking out for the public's best interest, for the students' best interest. Who's to say our administration at the schools, and the superintendent's office are in the same line of view as the, what, seven towns that you guys represent? It should go to the school board. Any new changes because of a fluid situation? I am very clear on the fluid situation. I work in healthcare. I am an essential worker. It is very fluid. I get it. But it should be brought to the school board for any changes of masking, or changing how we're gonna do schools and all that. Is, are the elementary school students still gonna be eating their lunches in their classrooms? Or are they gonna go back to the cafeteria? Yes, you said that, it's supposed to be how it was prior to all of this. But we don't know. We don't know what's in that reopening plan. You guys voted on it. We've had people that are looking on their phones, stuff in the school board. Show that you're passionate about this. As parents, we're passionate about our children's education. Maybe not all, but you have few that are. We just wanna know. It's not much to ask for. We wanna have our opinions heard. Thank you.
Brian Richardson, Alexandria. You guys all know where I come from with SUN. We, I attended a Cady luncheon on last Thursday. Officer Sucklin spoke. Others from the DEA spoke. There were 93,000 people last year that died of overdose. Now, overdose is just like a mental illness. A lot of it comes from mental illness first and whatnot. Well, we're not hearing anything about this because of COVID-19, and the, obviously, there is a pandemic, and obviously, there are people that are dying from it. But I ask you to please keep that into focus, and understand that what happened last year with the pandemic, with the pandemic, exasperated the epidemic of overdose. And there was 20,000 more people that died last year, and a lot of it had to do with the decisions that we made to, and the decisions we made as to how to go about shutting things down and whatnot. I thank you, folks, for your, I commend you for your decision, your thoughtful decision on this school reopening plan. I think you were a lot more thoughtful than most or many school boards in the state. I appreciate you, Fran, for your, for speaking to the people here, so that we understand more about how the board, the policy of the board. And I actually understood that and knew that you needed to, it's a difficult situation to discuss something personally with an email. But doing it with your opinion, that was a great way to speak to the question. And I just wanna thank you for listening to these folks, and just your thoughtful, your thoughtful discussion about it. I think you did a commendable job with that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Approval of manifests, Robin? Or Sue? Sorry.
I move to approve the manifest for the months of June and July.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on manifests? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. 7:30, I move to adjourn the meeting. I'm sitting here, my face, I can feel it, red or, red or, I'm like, oh, my gosh. Okay, any further discussion on manifests? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. 7:30, I move to adjourn the meeting. I'm looking here, my face, I can feel it, red, red, I'm like, oh my gosh.